There we go.
All right, welcome to the Peterborough Select Board Meeting for today. I'm not sure what the date is.
November 23rd.
Oh, November 23rd, right. I'm Tyler Ward. With me are fellow Select Board members Ed Youngst and Bill Taylor. We also have Town Administrator Rodney Bartlett, Town Administrator-elect Nicole McStay, Leo Smith, our finance director with us. So we'll be discussing our tax rate this evening. Great. Who's first?
Let me share this real quick. All right, so here you see Leo's spreadsheet showing our tax rate calculation. Leo, you want to start walking through this?
Sure. You know, this is that kind of that's a tax set tax rate setting model that we set up. So we can kind of go through the process of seeing what the impact on the tax rate might be, particularly if we're using a fund balance to help offset the town's part of the appropriation. And what it does is on the side down there, there's information about how the, you know, kind of the history of the fund balance over the last couple of years. Activity that happened this year, how we were able to increase our fund balance. And basically gets into the whole discussion about fund balance retention percentages. So I mean, it's, it's, it's quite a lively spreadsheet. So, you know, I guess the, the best way to start out is having a discussion about utilization of the fund balance. And I'll pass that over to Nicole.
Okay, so we picked up a lot of fund balances here largely because of this number right here. This is our net changes and encumbrances. Leo went through all the encumbrances that we still had hanging on the books and with a, you know, took a hack and slash approach to them. Closed down everything that wasn't really directly tied to an existing project or an ongoing project. And was able to put $1.4 million into the unrestricted portion of the fund balance, which is the piece of the fund balance that you guys use to offset the tax rate. So then this, we have other, and then we have above here, our budget surplus. So this is what was remaining from the budget unspent, either unspent funds or unrealized costs. You know, however you want to look at it, additional revenues is a few different categories that, you know, where all that would come from. But it added up to $134,859. So with that in mind, we have our total fund balance right now currently retained. And Leo, if I get any of this wrong or mislabel it, jump in, please.
Okay, I will.
Thank you. So right now we're at 15.17% retained unrestricted fund balance, which is an incredibly good place for us to be. DRA wants to see a minimum of 5% retained, which would be 1.438 million. These retention guidelines are right over here in the bottom, that bottom right-hand corner. Which puts us somewhere right in between, you know, the maximum recommended amount. And then there is a legal recommended amount, you're only allowed or legally allowed amount to retain, which I believe is 21%. I don't think that has changed in the last few years. So with all, with all this in mind, my concern with using a whole lot of, here's my recommendation. My recommendation is to use $850,000 worth of fund balance, which you find up here in the, kind of the top left part of the screen. That would bring our, the town's portion of tax rate to a 2.3% increase over last year. That is still an increase. Last year, our tax rate was 2975. With that recommendation, we would be going up to 3091. The big piece of this recommendation is because of the changes in the school rate. As you can see, the school's portion of the tax rate has gone up 7.8%, which is significant, obviously. $888,977 increase over a prior year. The reason why I think that using 850,000 of the fund balance as opposed to a higher amount, which would get us a flat tax rate, is twofold. One, I would really like to retain some fund balance, as much fund balance as we really responsibly can. Because we honestly just don't know what's going to be happening with the economy in the next couple of years. We obviously have some pretty serious, pretty significant capital projects that we're already working on. And if anything were to go sideways, I would really want to be able to reach into the fund balance for some, for some assistance covering those costs. The other reason is that I don't think that this trajectory with the school is going to change anytime soon. And I think that, you know, if you look, we can't, we really simply cannot cover for the schools increased costs. I don't want to use any additional amount of fund balance to reduce the impact of the school. The school is the school. People are continuing to vote in the school's budgets. I think that trying to make up for their spending would be, would be erroneous, would be an erroneous venture on our part. And lastly, I guess the third, third reason is that, that $1.4 million in encumbrances that we just closed, that's a one-time deal. We're not going to see that kind of bump in our unrestricted fund balance again. This is, this is the one shot that we get it really adding to that buffer. The $134,859, that's far more in line with, with what we usually contribute to the fund balance. Usually somewhere between 100 and, you know, $350,000, depending on the year and depending on what kind of projects we had that we were, were unable to complete. So, you know, looking at that kind of a budget surplus, I, I think it makes more sense to look, to rely on that as opposed to relying on the big number that we got here. And so if you were to, again, you know, not allow the tax rate to go up, you're going to see probably a much bigger jump next year if we're trying to retain a certain amount or stay at a certain level of fund balance. So better to step in the increase to the tax rate rather than hold off and do a huge whack in a future year, whether it's next year or the year after that.
Nicole, could I jump in real quick?
Please.
Yeah. The spreadsheet I have has the use of $950,000 worth of surplus.
Yes, and that's what gets you to a flat, that gets you to a flat town tax rate.
At 950,000?
Yes, 950.
Okay. What's the difference? But you got, I see eight, there you go. Okay.
So that, that gets you to a not quite flat, it's less than 1% increase.
On the town.
On the town's portion of the tax rate.
Okay, thank you.
Now, that's, that's, I don't want to use the word measly, but it's only $100,000.
Yes.
So when, when we're stockpiled 3.5 million, if we use 850, it would be 3.4 million if we use nine, correct?
Sure. It, it doesn't seem like a huge difference. I understand that. And to be perfectly honest, the town's portion of the tax rate is, you know, dwarfed, of course, by the school's portion, especially if you had to get the school portion and the state portion. But, you know, $100,000 is $100,000 and that may mean a lot to us in future years.
Yeah, I, I kind of think I favor Nicole's recommendation because I am fearful of the future. You know, the school thing isn't going to go away. God only knows what's going to happen. You know, with, with this virus thing, you know, it's I, I think it's prudent to be, to be, you know, as careful as we can be with how much we take out of there. Some unforeseen emergency, just like the COVID thing was an unforeseen thing, could happen again. And the school situation could even get worse, their cost. I mean, I don't know what they're going to do there. They're spending a lot of money on tents and people and equipment and yeah, you know, they, I mean, I'm pretty familiar with that they, they, they have a lot of maintenance that they have to be doing on buildings. They're, they're putting off stuff just to keep it reasonable. And, you know, there's only so long they're going to be able to do that. So I, I would be okay with Nicole's recommendation.
What do you think, Bill?
The thought of a dollar 16 jump in the tax rate is horrifying to me. And I bet it would be to anybody else that pays taxes. That's just massive.
Even if we keep our portion of the tax rate flat, I'm trying to remember what the exact number was that got us there. Let me do a quick goal seek.
It was 950.
No, that was the 0.9% increase.
It only puts us seven cents over 2016 numbers.
Okay, so you have to use over a million dollars to get to a flat town side and your tax rate still is going up by shy of a dollar, but still. And that's all driven by the school side.
Yeah, I understand that it's true. I mean, but I get the, I get it totally. And the concern about the future and all that kind of stuff too. That, I mean, the overall tax rate in 2016, 17, 18 was all prior to a big jump in assessments for a lot of people too. I mean, the, I mean, for, for my family's property from 2018 to 2019, tax bill was $10,000 difference up. Which is why I'm, you know, big portion of why I'm here in the first place, because that happened.
We also had a discussion not too long ago about holding off on revaluations, bringing them closer to reality. And we can't, we can't not think about that too. That's inevitable too.
Yeah. Yeah, the plan, at least at this point in time, is the revale would be done, no reveal, I'm sorry, a statistical update would be done in FY '21. Right. Because the ratio is getting really low. Around 92%.
Which is bad, you know, it's gonna, it's gonna move a lot and it's going to move a lot all at once.
Right. And I mean, and if, and if we could be sure that it was going to move equally for everybody, then that'd be one thing.
You can't, you can't do that. I mean, you know.
I know you can't.
Yeah.
But I mean, like if, if the tax rate goes up a dollar or a dollar plus, and then there's a revaluation that hits, you know, in my circumstance, as much or as hard as the last one, that's, that's the end of the line for us. So I mean, I know that I need to separate my personal thing from this business aspect of it. But that's pretty hard to do because I know that the same thing happened to a whole hell of a lot of people. Now, I don't know anybody's taxes that went down the last time around or their assessment. And then the tax rate didn't come down to meet it.
It unfortunately, it really is being driven by the school and there's just not an awful lot we can do about that. I mean, you can look back, it's, you know, goes up, you know, a few hundred thousand dollars a year, every year until it jumped by just about a million dollars this year. And I don't see that changing until they significantly alter the way that, you know, the, the business is run there. And, you know, that goes back again to the, you know, the will of the voters in the other communities and as well as the, the school board.
Until, until the communities, I have to say, I'm, I'm really sensitive about that because as you know, I lay this on to that for three years. And I tried as a selectman and as an individual to do things. And, you know, until we get people to realize what's really driving the tax rate here, it's the schools. 7.8% is, is gigantic increase. Until we get people in all the towns to realize that they're going to keep doing what they're doing. They, they had a plan where they could have consolidated to four buildings instead of having 11. They had a plan that was presented by the administration in September of 2017, which I attended the meeting. And at the end of the presentation done by the staff, the senior people at Conval, they, a guy from one of the small towns stood up and said, he moves that we table this and not discuss it. And within 30 seconds, it was over. And I was sitting next to a couple of the staff people, senior people who participated in that. And they were so discouraged after all the hard work they put in. And, and it was a very detailed presentation, well done. And so at the meetings, when I tried to talk about it, you know, I mean, you know, I just about got tired and feathered and thrown out. I mean, the people don't go to those meetings. They don't, they keep, they keep voting for the budget at the town meeting. Until that happens, no matter what we do, how much we try to cover it, it's going to keep being a problem. There's a lot of maintenance on those buildings that has, can only be deferred so long. And one of the, one of the people I was sitting next to that night was the facilities manager up there. So I know that he would have loved to have had some of the savings that would have come out of that plan. And I think that the voters just, either they don't seem to care or they don't get it. But, so, you know, the more we mess around with the fund balance, to me, just hides the, the problem.
Well, I think the other component too, you know, as it relates to the fund balance is that, you know, we moved money that had been appropriated in the prior year on those various mortgage payments or anticipated mortgage payments on the library, on the Main Street Bridge or whatever. You know, we, it was, there was a amount voted from, from the fund balance at town meeting, which is 400, almost, was almost 489,000. So I mean, that's going to work in our favor going forward as it relates to being able to use that money to offset some of the, the future debt service with those, particularly with those two, two, two projects.
Wait, can you explain that again, Leo? Is it the amount voted from the fund balance is 490,000 bucks, right?
Yeah, yes, yep.
Is that, what is that? Does that mean that's the amount voted to spend from the fund balance or that we have extra in the fund balance?
That, no, no, that's the money that we had in prior years budgeted to go towards debt service on the library and the Main Street Bridge project and the transcript dam project. But because both of those, all three of those projects were delayed, that money was sitting in our unrestricted fund balance instead of getting put towards debt service payments. So in order to keep that money for that particular purpose, what we, we did on this last round of town meeting was vote to have that money go into capital reserve funds and expendable trust funds. And then from there, the money will go directly to the debt service. So that's going to be used to lower our debt service payments in whatever way makes the most sense. I don't think we quite have a plan for that yet, but that will reduce our budget, which will have a positive impact ultimately. It's a little, it's, it's a little bit of moving stuff around, but you know, from one category to another. But essentially that money got, got moved at this, you know, 490, $89,000, got moved out of the unrestricted fund, fund balance where, you know, it could have been used to reduce the tax rate, but then that would have put the additional burden of having to raise and appropriate those debt service payments again in the future. Instead, the money is kept for that purpose.
Money is going to be spent because the debt is going to last just as long as it originally was appropriated for, except it's going to be a the beginning point moved ahead a year or two.
That's correct. Yeah. But we don't have to raise the money again. It's already been raised once and we don't need to do it again. So we can either front load it, put it on the, the debt service, put it towards the debt right up front, so we don't have to bond as much. Or we can use it to lower the first, you know, first payment or the first few payments, or we can hold on to it. If interest rates are better on what we're making than what we're paying, maybe hold on to it to the end or to the middle and be able to pull on that money then to reduce payments. Gives us a lot of options.
Yeah, and if you remember, Ed, we talked quite a bit about that during the whole CIP process.
Yeah.
Yep. As an offset, the revenue offset to the debt service.
But I mean, one way of looking at it is that's $490,000 in the bank that we didn't know we were going to have.
Well, you could look at it that way, but you could also look at it this way. You know, you, you have a car, you know, that you've already made all your payments on and you start saving up some money to buy a new car. You know, and you've got that money set aside. You happen to get a couple more years out of your old car, but you still have to go and buy the new car. Are you going to use the payments you have in the bank to, you know, pay for something else? Or are you going to use the payments that you, are you going to use that money that you would save to go towards your new car? Just because you got a couple of years extra out of it, maybe you want to put that money towards a new car. The purpose that you had saved that money for in the first place. That's how we're looking at it.
And that's what you're showing on the spreadsheet. You've minus that out.
Yes.
Yeah.
Out of the fund. Yeah, I mean, that vote's already happened. That money's already been moved. So I mean, yeah, it's, it's kind of a done deal.
So what we have is the 4,364,000.
Yeah.
We can't use that all, obviously.
No, but you can use, you can, you follow the fund retention guidelines that are over here.
Right.
I mean, 5%, that's the minimum recommended is the reason why that's the minimum. That is incredibly low. That's, that's really scary territory to be in. We've always striven to be right around 10%, you know, somewhere north or south of that, which of course we have been recently. Currently, you know, if we were to use the $850,000, that would put us at 11.72% retained.
What if that number was 10% where does the tax rate land?
Um, okay, hold on, Lee. Hold on one second.
Well, roughly at 10%, you'd end up using fund balance of about 1.4 million.
1.488 actually, to be exact. So that actually drops the town tax rate significantly. That puts us at minus 6.3%. That puts the tax rate still up at $30.01. You do that though, and we have no flexibility going forward. So next year, if we were to keep a flat budget, let's just, you know, make the assumption that we were to keep a flat budget. We would be going from a $30 per thousand tax rate to a $32.11 per thousand tax rate overnight. You would be adding two bucks and 11 and 10 cents onto it.
And that's just with our town's portion, never mind the other.
I, I was assuming all things being equal, that all, all the budgets across the board being completely flat. So this is why I really am hoping that the board will allow us to step in and increase because we're never going to have 1.4 million dollars to play with again. It, this is unusual. You know, and we have used an awful lot of tax rate over the la, awful lot of fund balance over the last couple of years to keep the tax rate low. And it's, it has been a good thing to be able to do, but at the same time, if we don't have that money to use in the future, there's going to be a shock to everyone's system when they get an uncushioned bill.
Yeah, well, when, when you look at, I just went through the CIP, you know, and I, I know that it shows that there's a lot of projects out there that still need to come yet, that haven't come yet, that we're not paying for through the tax rate yet. And, you know, the, the debt service part of the spreadsheet, you know, went up significantly. You know, I don't know what, if it was 2022 or 2023, but it went up significantly, like almost double what it is today. So that's when everything that we've been approving is now all being paid for. And you know, there seems to be compelling arguments to do these, you know, the fire department building. I mean, you know, the, the pictures show that the chief presented that the, they already had to take away the training room to make sleeping and things are very tight in there. And, you know, it's so anyway, I, you know, that's what I fear is that coming, you know, the next few years out. And I think Nicole said it a different way, but I mean, you know, we would see, if we use too much of this up now, we're going to see a huge increase. And that's without any more surprises or crises.
Well, Nicole, you're going to, you're going to be in charge of how the money gets spent next year, right?
If you keep me on, yes.
So then you can make us more comfortable that there'll be a better fund balance than you're anticipating right this second.
I can't promise anything. I absolutely cannot. I mean, if 2020's taught us anything is that you have absolutely no idea what's coming. Your best laid plans are just that, they're plans. It's not reality. So it's, we will see, you know, we, we will see. I'm, I, I fully expect that at the end of this year's budget, you know, when we get to July 1, we will be returning money to the fund balance. But we haven't gone through the FY '22 budget process yet. I, I can't tell you, I mean, I can look and, you know, I can look at the draft department budgets right now, but not all of them, because not all of them are available yet. And I don't know, you know, what's coming, what, what the will of the budget committee and the select board and the voters is going to be. You know, we still have a lot to get through before I can, you know, make any predictions about, you know, even next fiscal year. So
Well, I think that's another process that we have to look at differently. I mean, there's companies out, the hospital, I didn't, I don't think I knew this, maybe it's been public. But, you know, they all had to take a big decrease in pay. And I suspect that's happening in a lot of, a lot of businesses. And so, you know, the it's just, we have to be, we, we have to really do our best to keep that budget as low as possible for the next, next year also, in addition to this discussion we're having on now, I think, anyway.
Do keep in mind though, if we, if we were to have, let's say, a flat budget going into next year and we stick to it and we keep to a zero budget, you know, zero, not going over, just stick right to the budget, we're not returning a budget surplus unless there's excess revenue. Now, if we, if we put forward a good, tight budget, we're going to use all of it.
No, I hear you.
Yeah.
So, and also this year, we had a revenue deficit of $900,000?
Yeah, that's, yes, that, that is true. But some of that had offsets as well as, part of that also, there were some offsets in terms of expenses that weren't actually followed through with as well. So the, the number is, has, has a number of different components involved with it.
But we're essentially anticipating $900,000 more than we ended up.
Correct. When we look at FY '22 last year, yeah.
Yeah. So what are the projections for next year on that?
Don't know yet. We're still in the Don't know yet. We're still in the, we're still in the process of. Doing all of the various departmental budgets and that kind of thing.
I think one of the things that goes to that revenue deficit is probably the highway garage.
Yes, it is.
Because the revenue deficit is the bond, is the money from the bond, the proceeds of the bond that we never took out. So that's probably gonna be a large, the largest share of that revenue deficits. It's not actually a deficit in revenues per se. It's a loan that we never took out, but it's also expenses that we haven't spent yet.
Yeah, and that's an important, important answer to that question about why that number might look. Like, oh, well, we could have got eight hundred ninety-four thousand dollars more. No, it wasn't. It was, we did, we didn't borrow the money we thought we were going to.
Correct.
And the, and the borrowed money shows up as revenues, offsetting revenues for.
Correct.
Correct.
Well, I think, I I think you made a good case for using the eight fifty. It's still a large, large sum.
Lost your bill. You want, try again?
Hold on, yeah, how about now?
That's better.
Um, yeah, I think a lot of these, a lot of the conversation and the arguments for One Direction or another. Actually work both ways. Because if we're thinking about. All the people that were asked to take a cut in pay. And there's certainly more, and there's people at work and, you know, all those types of things. And we're looking at a over a dollar increase in the tax rate. And if you think about the, how many of our residents pay rent that are gonna see their rents go up because of that? That's. That's a really tough conversation to have with each one of those people. And even though I might understand it and not agree with it. It's when it comes down to the people that really can't afford a bump right now. That's where it starts to get scary.
Yeah, I have to admit, it is scary, all of this. Because no matter what we do, that tax rate is still gonna increase. Um, and.
What's the percentage? What's the percentage increase from twenty-nine seventy-five to thirty ninety-one?
Three point nine one.
Three point nine one?
Yep. And that's heavily weighted to the fact that the school is up seven point eight percent in that actual appropriation. I mean, that's what the school's driving the, driving the tax rate.
It's almost a million dollars. I mean, you can't, you can't ignore it.
No, you can't.
Whenever we get this decided, we ought to make damn sure we publicize that very well. Because, um. It's not the town that's causing this problem. It is the school.
And it's. You're right.
It's the school, and if we try to cover it too much. I don't know, I just, I think there's gonna come a time when people are gonna get fed up with it. Um, I don't know what these other towns are doing with these numbers, but, um. I mean, they have to be impacted just about as badly as we are. And they're a lot worse off, most of them economically probably than Peterborough is.
Well, I don't, I don't, well, they might be worse off economically and the property owner standpoint. But not from the tenant or renter standpoint.
We have more of those, for sure.
So, you know, like I know Greenfield just cut, what, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of their budget? Which is, I don't even know what their total budget is compared to ours, but that was before they're even, you know. Getting into their next year's budget. They had to cut. You know, before they even started talking about the tax rate. And their budgets, you know, pretty small compared to ours. Yeah, I don't, I mean, I. This is totally horrifying to me. You know, I'm looking at it, I'm looking at a. Three point nine one percent increase. And in reality, that's pretty much only like fifteen hundred bucks for my tax bill. But that's gotta come from somewhere. And it comes from tenants first. You know? And. May, I mean, it's like the same problem that we're having to talk about right now with the town, like stuff that you need to do. For your buildings and your infrastructure and stuff like that and stuff that you can't afford to do. And it's, you know, so it's like, it's like for me, it's the same discussion that. That I have at home that I'm having right here with the town. It's like, okay, well.
We're losing you again, Bill. Thank you, Bill, you might need to call in.
Hear me now?
Yeah, it's a little better, but it's rough. Hey, Bill, you here?
Yep.
So, I mean, we saw what even adding another hundred thousand to the use from the fund balance does. It doesn't, doesn't change all that much, does it?
Not really. I mean, it goes, it drops it down to one point nine percent increase in the town's tax rate, town share. So. It's still an increase. It's still a, a pretty big jump.
Yeah.
What was it at eight fifty again? Good. Just change it back for a minute.
Yep, there you go.
So it cuts the towns down, but it's still, um. I forget what it was there, the total before, but, um. Went down a bit, but, um.
It went from, so at nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars of fund balance used, it's a thirty dollars seventy-seven cent tax rate. Tax, yeah, tax rate. So basically a one dollar increase, more or less.
Geez, still a buck. Can you guys hear me now?
Yeah, we can hear you much better.
Still a buck.
Yeah. I, I mean. I hear where everybody's going with it, and I'm sure that you're right. But I'm, I'm looking to get in the other direction further into that fund balance.
Like I said, you you certainly can do that. It's just gonna lessen your power to, to protect the taxpayers in the future.
Yep.
Right. And where, where are we, do we think, in the effect of this pandemic and people losing jobs and that sort of thing? Are we, we haven't even reached peak yet, right? So it could potentially be worse in the near future.
It's really gonna depend on what the federal government does. I mean, I hate to, hate to have to rely on them so much. But, you know, if they're able to get it together and in January come back strong with another, you know, series of. Grants and, you know, low, low and low interest loan programs, that sort of thing. It's gonna make a huge difference, you know, because even if people are temporarily out of work. If, for instance, they're getting money through the unemployment program again, that's gonna keep them paying their rent and paying their bills. Now, and that's gonna keep a lot of, lot of businesses, a lot of, obviously landlords, everyone afloat. But, you know, if the stalemate or stall or whatever it is that's happening in Washington right now continues. It's, it is gonna get really dark, you know, it's gonna get really ugly through the winter until we finally get a vaccine out there. And enough people taking it for it to have a real impact.
It looks like at the, at least, you know, I do try to watch the governor's briefings here. And, I mean, he's still pretty optimistic about that the economy in New Hampshire. Is not nearly as bad off as it is in another larger states.
Oh, he's absolutely right.
So I think that's a. At least for now, a plus for us.
I think it, it depends on your sector. It's also another piece of it. I mean, obviously, if you're in hospitality or tourism, you're not having a great year right now. But, you know, a lot of that was really insulated by that unemployment, that additional unemployment that we were getting. And I think that that really helped keep our local economy going really well. It's, it's gonna be a different story. Peterborough was lucky to a certain extent, you know, because we were so healthcare dependent and retirement dependent here. Most of our jobs, you know, many of our jobs rather, not all, but many of our jobs are, are through Rivermead. Or Scott Farrar, or any number of the retirement, or they're, they're linked to it somehow. That does, those jobs aren't gonna go away. You know, because they, they require that staff. But, you know, it doesn't mean that, like, New Hampshire Ball Baring, you know, they're not hiring. They, they don't have overtime anymore, you know, it's, certainly their work is really slowing down because the aviation industry really slowed down. And so there's, there are some segments of the economy that aren't doing nearly as well.
And the hospital could very likely be making more cutbacks.
Yeah, um, I don't have any kind of insight there, so.
We are, where, where are we with the, uh, the lawsuit between Conval and the state and funding there?
I don't know, to be quite honest. I haven't paid close enough attention to it.
News about that at all lately, um.
I suspect it's probably parked in court somewhere. Um, it's, you know, they're triaging what they're hearing at the superior court level right now. You know, mostly criminal cases. Um, and the other cases, civil cases, things like that. They're getting knocked back in the calendar.
Don't, don't quote me on this, but I wanna say that the last I heard about it was that. Um, well, so first Conval won the case, right? And then the state appealed it. And I wanna say that appeal was rejected.
I don't know. I didn't hear that.
I saw, I did, the last I heard, there was a date scheduled for. Maybe it was that, and I, but I, I haven't seen, and I get emails pretty regularly from, from the people that are, um. You know, pushing of this whole issue with the, with the state about properly funding schools. I mean, usually they have in their newsletters, you know, that I get re- pretty regularly. Um, they usually have something, but I don't recall seeing anything about this case, um, myself lately at all. In fact, I had the same question. I wonder where we stand with that, but, um. I think if it was good news, we'd probably all know it already.
Well, I mean, I think where we, we stand with it is that no matter how wonderful it looks like on the court level. It doesn't turn into cash in our pockets anytime soon. Right?
Right.
Um, I could make a suggestion, you know, in terms of wanting to look at the, uh, the tax rate itself. Excuse me, the implications it would have, particularly as it relates to the community. And that would be as, as to reduce the town tax rate for this year lower than it was last year. Um, if we were to, again, I'm just throwing this out there, we could pretty much with nine hundred and seventy-five thousand. We could basically have a flat town budget in terms of dollars, but the actual rate would go from nine eighty-five to nine eighty-one. That would still leave us with an adjusted fund balance of three, three million, three hundred and eighty-nine thousand, seven fifty-eight. Or eleven point seven nine percent retention, which is about the same level we were, excuse me, um, last year.
It's still a dollar increase on the tax rate, though.
On, on the overall, correct, yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, what I was saying, what I was positioning is that the fund balance obviously should be for more focus to the town rate. Once you get beyond that, then that, then you're saying, okay, we're gonna subsidize the schools as well.
We're already subsidizing them already with the, with the amount of money we pay.
Yeah, that's right. I don't know what the answer is, and this is, this is gonna, this is the question always, right? Like, what the hell with the school? Their budget keeps going up with less and less kids. I don't, I mean, like, I don't understand it and I don't want to. That's why, I mean, I would. Much rather deal with the town level than the school budget level, but I don't understand how it keeps happening. And the, and the reason people always vote for it is because. Conval holds a gun to the voters' heads and says, your children's education is gonna be horrific unless you say yes to everything. I mean, they don't. I, I mean, that's how you sell a budget, I guess, and that's what they're trying to do, but it, it always comes across as very threatening to me.
I think, I think part of the problem is that there is the refusal to close down any and consolidate any of the smaller schools. And that's where the money is really being lost at the school level. I mean, they, they have too many facilities. That they have to pay to keep open, pay to maintain and pay to staff. I mean, you have to have a minimum level of staffing just to have the building open. And, you know, accepting students. So I think, you know, it's, it's two sides of that. Yes, I mean, they do, they do definitely make that point. It's like, okay, you know, if, if you wanna keep all of these small schools open, that's fine. But this is what it's gonna cost to continue the same level of education that, educational services that we're giving to your children now.
Yeah, but it's not just the buildings. I mean, even, what were the, what were the figures? Does anybody even ballpark, remember when they said, you know, if they shut down all four of those schools, what it would save?
They, yes, they, they would have, they would have saved in their, in the presentation made that I was at that night. In September of two thousand seventeen, about. You know, they, th- these were somewhat ballparkish numbers, but they estimated that they would save. Uh, four and a half million dollars right away and. And that would include funding early childhood for the whole district, which. In the short term, it's gonna probably cost some, some of that money. I mean, it's gonna cost money. We probably could have saved more money if we didn't do it, but in the long term. Doing that really saves lots of money for society for years to come. Kids that go to school at five years old that have never held a pencil or a pen or had anybody read to them, which there's lots of them, by the way. That go there that way. They, they, they take until the, the ninth grade with a lot of effort with special needs and all of that to catch up. To the ninth grade, whereas if they have early education, um, it's much quicker. They start off much better when they go to kindergarten. So that was the whole basis of the, of the plan. So they were still gonna save over four million dollars for sure. With. With, um, and, and, and they, because it's a real. Um, the superintendent strongly believes that we should be doing that here. Uh, she, she's make, make some great presentations about that. And it was a real eye opener for me, because I used to be a conservative Republican who didn't wanna spend any more money on kids, especially. That, and I changed my mind after I heard her presentation, when I realized how much money. And how much better off these kids would be and how, how behind they are and how many there are that go to school that. and how much better off these kids would be and how, how behind they are and how many there are that go to school that way.
I think it's all, yeah.
This is.
Oh, see, you have that argue, you, you have that conversation, then it's really, it's even, you know, it's even harder to convince people to vote down a school budget. Because that's the kinda stuff they threaten.
Right, I mean, part of the problem, though, is that you have, you have an outsized, it's, it's like the Electoral College in many ways. The smaller communities have an outsized representation and outsized voice in, in the budget and the budget process with the school. And that really hamstrings, you know, a community like Peterborough that is definitely carrying more of the burden, but, you know, at the same time, you know, wants to see the children get a good education. So it, it makes it very difficult, you know, when you don't allow the district to close down buildings that they don't need anymore. You know, because a kid in Francis Town will have to, you know, a five-year-old in Francis Town's gonna have to ride the bus longer to get to Greenfield or wherever they would be going to school. Uh, that's, you know, really hamstrings the whole process.
The problem bill is in a nutshell, if you look at the school board, there's thirteen members. Okay, the, the majority of members, it, it's a political thing, there's a, there's a, there's an agreement that the town signed when they, when they did this. And the agreement has a built-in thing that nothing can be changed in that Articles of Agreement unless there's a two-thirds vote in the district, which means all nine towns. There has to be a two-thirds vote before you can change anything, so they can't close schools, they can't do anything unless the school board all gets on board, all thirteen of them, or at least most of them, and convinces the towns that we've got to do this. That, it's a political thing, they have more votes, they, they, if these little towns with their one-person member on the school board all join up together, they have more votes than um, Peterborough happens to have four, but, um, that's because we have a larger I guess, population and assess, you know, I don't know how they come up with those numbers, but
That's exactly.
Reality is that we're, we're outnumbered by those small towns that each have, no matter how few people they have, they have one vote on that committee.
But we're not outnumbered at the ballot box.
No, but because we have a Maytown meeting and everyone else votes in March, our turnout in March is abysmally low, you know.
Turnout in Peterborough and our vote in Peterborough has been very disappointing for me because it was Peterborough people that were making the most noise about this for the, for the three years that and I was there and, and maybe before that, I don't know, I wasn't here then, but, um, and people overwhelmingly, even in Peterborough, said, vote yes on that budget. And if we did get a huge negative vote and could convince one other town maybe, or two other towns to do it with us, you could win. I did lots of numbers on this and we could win, but it doesn't happen, doesn't happen in Peterborough. I wasn't popular with a lot of people in Peterborough because I was pushing to, um, close schools, I can tell you that, you know, they, they believe, they, they believe that, that the, the threats and all of that stuff that they make, uh, from the schools and the, and the teachers and stuff. The school board voted to not approve that last big increase they got and all the town voted, and I think just about every town voted in favor of it.
Yeah, and it wasn't even close.
Anyway, that's not gonna solve our problem for, we gotta set this tax rate, I think.
I was just looking at this, uh, Le- with Leo's suggestion of nine seventy-five, and I'm a little confused, it says, uh, upper, up, upper in the box says, current amount retained eleven point seven two percent at three, four, nine, nine.
That was at the beginning of the year.
Yeah.
Okay, so how is three, three, eight, nine, eleven point seven nine percent, it's a higher percentage, but it's a lower number?
It's cuz, it's because the base that we're using is a little bit different. Over to the right-hand side where you can see the general fund operating expenses, that's what it used as the basis for the calculation, so that number is a little bit lower than what it was last year, excuse me.
Makes sense. In essence, uh, I, I know Rodney likes this, that one point four net change in encumbrances is free money, right?
Yeah.
I have to unmute myself with that one. Nothing's free.
I know, and we say, we joke about this every time, but, so, but, so nine seventy-five of that is, is you know, it's not the whole thing.
No, no, it's not, and, and again, it's not, I mean, yes, it is in part. I'm, I'm making the lower recommendation in part because I would like to retain the fund balance, of course, but really in part because we're gonna have to step in a higher tax rate. It's, eh, to hit everyone with a fourteen percent increase on your tax rate in a single year in the future would, is horrifying as a concept, and I I just can't, I can't in good conscience recommend that.
But that's, that's also a worst-case scenario thing that you're talking about, you don't know that it's gonna be a fifteen percent increase.
Well, let's, let's look, for instance, at our current year budget surplus, um, which is a hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars, let's use that. And let's imagine that's all that we really had to work with, we'd be looking at an eleven point eight percent increase this year. Yeah, and that's that would be just disastrous.
Yeah, but that's not the number that we're dealing with here, and that's also comes, I mean, if you're looking at it on the sheet, you're also looking at a nine hundred thousand dollar revenue shortfall.
Right.
Some of that's loans that we didn't take out, I don't know how that actually works.
I, I actually, I think the loan that we had estimated was more than that, so in fact, we made up money somewhere else. So it, it really is just in the loan. That's just the loan that we, that we did not take out.
I think it was one point five million.
Yeah, it was a one point five million dollar loan, so we made up quite a bit and either on, you know, unexpected, anticipated revenues or, or what have you. I, I don't know if some of that was the go-for money or, or what have you, but there was definitely some money we weren't expecting to get along the way.
Yeah, I, and I hear, I hear what you're saying, Nicole, we're, we're the future is so uncertain and, and, I mean, we have to be, we have to be real here. Things are not gonna go down in price, nothing's gonna get cheaper, taxes are always gonna go up. We're lucky, we're, we're, we should be grateful that we can use what we do have, but we really should, we really should keep a cushion, knowing that it's just gonna get, it's gonna get worse.
I remember a year we only used a hundred thousand dollars, that's all we used one of those years.
Twenty sixteen, we used a hundred thousand.
You know, uh, it's tempting to, to do this, and I was, I think I was probably not in favor too much of even doing that because I think five percent is the minimum, I, you know, um, I checked around with some other towns, they had, they had rules already, you know, I don't know how they did it, but they, they wanted eight percent, um, and you know, uh, I'm happy to see that we have as big a percent as we do now, I, I don't think we need that quite that big either, but, um,
I think the, you know, another part of it too, not, not to confuse the whole thing, but you know, in looking at the, uh, adjusted fund balance, um, and I just, just so happened, I have that nine seventy-five in there. The thing is, is that the fund balance is a calculation, it's basically assets minus liabilities, expense, revenues minus expenses roughly. But when you look at our, when you look at our, um, assets, you know, the primary, the biggest number we have is our investment account. That's a liquid account, that's about two point six million. So when you look at an adjusted fund balance, you know, if you ended up going deep, you would possibly have to start using money, liquid, liquid cash out of that investment account. Cuz it's not that much, it's not that far off. That's two point six million, that it, the deeper you go, the more, the, the risk of potentially having to use some of that money.
And that is our fail-safe cushion at this point, I mean, that's, that's what's keeping us from having to take out tax anticipation notes if we have a bad year, which is a disaster, you know, I mean, for any community that gets stuck in that. It's one of the reasons why we made such a huge overhaul and how we budget is to get away from having to take out those notes each year, because the interest rates are insanely high on that. It's there.
Have ten percent?
There's, there's absolutely nothing wrong with ten percent, I think ten percent's a very healthy number. My concern, though, is because we've used so much fund balance over the last couple of years and we're looking at doing it again this year, you, you really, next year, that will be it, if we get down to ten percent and we wanna stay there at between eight and ten percent, you're not gonna have any fund balance to use to cushion that increase. You know, right now, we're using a significant of bound and fund balance just to keep, you know, to keep it flat, even though our budget went up last year. Everyone knew our budget was gonna go up, you know, we told them it would, but we're trying, we're trying to keep our share of it flat, you know. Eventually, it's gonna have to go up, we're not gonna have these big, you know, these this big excess of fund balance to, to work with. So if we let it go up a little bit this year, let it go up a a little bit next year, it's gonna hurt less in the long run.
That that's easy for us to say. I mean, yeah, it will hurt less in the long run if it comes to that, which we don't know that it will. We don't know that it won't either, I get that. But I, I mean, like, in the middle of a pandemic, raising the tax rate over a dollar is
But most of it isn't up to us, it really isn't.
Well, it is right now in this meeting, it is. I know what you're saying, you're right, I mean, it's not when the school goes up that much, but
I think that, um, the professional experts are telling us I think they're presenting, presenting it correctly, um, you know, I, I think it's too risky to, to take it down that low, I would, I, I I might be willing to, you know, compromise and say, well, let's do nine hundred, but, um, you know, I just, uh, Nicole made a sound recommendation with good reason, she's been through this a lot more than, than I have and you know, it's it's prudent that we, um, we, we can't just think of the current year, I don't think, I personally.
We, we can't just think of the current year, but we can still be happy if there's only ten percent left in our you know, fund balance. Ten percent's still great, and that's a number that, you know, like, we've been below that for a while, correct?
So, so there's us at, just at ten percent, we're using one point four eight eight million dollars. And that gets us to ten percent fund balance, and that means that next year we, we will have dropped the tax rate down to thirty dollars and one cent, we'll be subsidizing the school district at that point. And all of their increases.
Yeah, and then we'll, we'll
And, and then next year, we will have zero fund balance, and it's all just, all, the whole burden's gonna hit the taxpayers all at once, Bill.
If we show a minus six point three percent in the tax rate and then have to go up a big percent, a much bigger percent next year, it's, it's gonna be a lot worse politically and economically on the people.
They're not gonna understand, they're not gonna
Worried about it politically, to be perfectly honest with you.
They're not gonna understand why we went up ten percent in one year, they're not gonna go back and look at this video and try to understand what we were thinking. They're gonna look at that ten percent increase in the, in our tax rate next year, and they're gonna lose their minds.
What gets us, what gets it at a, at a reasonable percent, you know, of half a percent increase over last year, what number, what number would that be?
That was the nine fifty.
Yeah, it was the nine fifty, I believe.
What? What?
Nine seventy-five.
When you, when you talk about how they're not gonna understand a ten percent increase, the, the voters in each town don't go, they don't they're not talking about, oh, well, this is the school budget and this is the town's budget, because they don't get a bill from the school. They get a bill from the town.
No, and then when, when they call and we explain it to them, they say, oh, well, I guess, okay, that, if it went to the school. Cuz they know they voted for it.
Well, I mean, it's not about, it's not about the people that call, it's about the people that don't have a second in their day to call and ask about it.
But, but your tax bill is broken out, it says what's the, what the school is, what the town is, it, it's there, it's pretty straightforward. What you're paying for in your tax bill.
We, we always present that well at town meeting, we, we always present this budget that we, we talk about the town park, and that's what we tell people, this board has been able to control is the town park, and if we start, if we now go to a minus, just, to me, it makes no sense because it's not real, it's or further subsidizing the schools. I, I just, I, I can't agree to that, I
Yeah, let me, let me just tell you, I know that you're right. But that, I, I know that that's, I know that you're right, Ed, and Nicole, and whoever else is having that conversation, I know that that's right. I know it in my heart, but in my soul, I can't, it's, it's, it's like I mean, you know, we're gonna end up probably right around at the nine fifty mark anyways, I it's just that I have such a major time swallowing a tax increase, even now, or at any point when we're also sitting around a table talking about how important it is that we get affordable housing. And it's like, I, I, I mean, I know that it's not our responsibility to pay down the, the school boards, the schools increases, and I know that it's not responsible for us to do it, but if I don't sit here in this meeting with you guys and voice my absolute concern and that I'm completely horrified in a dollar, a a dollar a thousand increase, it's just, I mean, it's horrifying to me, and, you know, like that, it, it's gonna make the difference for a lot of people that can't stay in this town. That, I work for the people that live in the houses in this town, and I know that the right thing to do is to have this big jump. But it's, I, I guess I feel like I just need to say it, I don't know, but
I think the other
The right thing to do.
I think the other piece that comes into play, you know, particularly if you look at the last couple of years where we used, um, eight hundred thousand last year, and let's say we end up at the nine fifty, you know, that, the, in order to try to maintain or grow the fund balance a little bit, what that means is, you know, a big chunk of that money needs to be come out of the budget, so you look at the next year's budget and you say it's, you know, without the nine fifty, it's seven point nine million, well, you know, maybe you need to carve out four hundred, five hundred thousand dollars out of the budget.
Well, we have to be
Because the, because the fund balance isn't gonna be, isn't gonna be, uh, in place the way it is right now, it's gonna be very, very tight.
Right, and we have to look at every single number and decide what's not, you know, life or death in every number and every department.
Yeah, absolutely.
I think we should do the responsible thing, recommended or close to what was recommended anyway, on this, and then be equally as diligent when we, we go through the budget thing, and we may have to make some tough decisions, you know, I, I, I was told this is one of the reasons why they wanted me to be on here, because I've been through this seven times, this budget thing, seven years in total. And I do have a financial background also, so I, and it took me a while to get to the point, um, even in the beginning, because I, I understood business numbers and personal numbers, but I didn't understand much about uh, government, the way they do it here, you know, the way governments do it is different, it's a whole different type of, of accounting. It e- eh, even like using that revenue deficit thing, I mean, that's really not real, that's it, it shows the way we do our budget. it, it shows the way we do our budget, it, it's real, but it is, wasn't real money. Uh, we, it, it was because we didn't take out the loan, which is considered an offset in the budget, a revenue offset against expenses.
Right.
So I think we should be equally as tough with our discussions when we get to the budget. And.
I agree with that.
I do think that Leo's right. If we don't do that, uh, and don't be, maybe we, we, we have to figure out a way that we can, um, have some fund balance next year also, um. So it's going to be a tricky thing, I guess, to do that.
We're going to have to get that out of the budget and, you know, whoever the boss is next year is going to have to make sure that everything's run as tight as possible.
Yes.
Related to those numbers. So, I mean, like.
Setting the town up for, uh, we, we're, we're setting us a false sense of security here. The last three years, I mean, one point two million, eight hundred thousand, nine seventy-five, when, when prior to that, it was only a couple hundred thousand at a shot. Where this is unsustainable at this rate. And, and I don't, I don't think it's smart to, to, to toss all your, all your savings, you know, it, I'm a, I'm a nest eggger and that, you know, that's where I stand. I, I think the reality is taxes are going up. People have to be mature enough to understand that taxes just go up. You can't, you can't just say taxes are evil and I don't want to pay them. They're going, they go up. That's what happens. It's like you can't buy a cup of coffee for under five bucks. It's just how it is. Uh, it, it doesn't relate to affordable housing because affordable housing is more about people not being paid enough to afford houses. It has absolutely nothing to do with the cost of housing. It, it's about people not getting paid enough. And that's a whole other realm of where we've kind of got ourselves in a, in a, in a hole in this country with that, with that angle. So I'm, I'm, I'm leaning towards the recommendation, but I, I would go up to nine hundred, nine twenty-five maybe max, but uh, I don't, I think we're going to need that fund balance in the future and, and I'm more concerned that we won't have it when, when we need it again. So that's where I am.
I think we.
We're not taking any money out of the fund balance if we're at nine fifty or, or nine twenty-five or nine seventy-five, right? Because we're sti- keeping it flat to last year, the fund balance.
Well, you're, you're taking money out of the current fund balance. Yes. This, that's, that's what you have to do. You're taking the money out. Think of the fund balance as your savings account. That's where this money is coming from. You're taking it out of savings.
I think we, we're beating this to death, you know, I, I'll make a motion that we, um, we take nine hundred thousand dollars from the fund balance to help offset the tax increase.
Well, that puts the town's tax rate at a one point six percent increase over last year. And gives you an overall tax rate of thirty dollars and eighty-four cents.
I think we have to do it, I think. I think I'll second that. Any further discussion? One point six. Going once. Okay, uh, do I have an all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yeah, I can't all in favor of that. My, I mean, I'm close, but I just can't.
So that's a nay.
I think one point six percent is probably a pretty decent. I mean, I think that's better than we've done in other years, isn't it, Nicole?
Yes.
The town portion. So I don't think we have anything to be, I, and you know, it's done now, but I have to say, I wish I could agree with Bill and I do because I feel bad also about the economic impact, but, um, the reality is, and Tyler said it quite well, the reality is, you know, we, we did a good job. We, we did a good job by the town at keeping it at one point six percent. And unfortunately, if we could control the whole thing, I would be, but we don't, we don't control that. We have no control over it. So, um, I agree with Bill's sentiments a lot about the, the, the people's increases and rent increases. It's, it's not good, but we don't have any control over that.
I know we don't. I, I mean, like, believe me, you guys, I totally get it. I really totally get it. And if I could do something about the school right now, I would because that's our increase. And I, I mean, a one point six percent increase in the budget for a town is, is awesome.
Well, you can do something, Bill. You know a lot of people in town. You know way more people than I do. You're, you're a resident here. You gotta convince them. They gotta start voting no on those school budgets.
Yeah, but most of those people that I know in town don't like me that much anymore. Especially not after this, but I, I mean, I know it's not us. We're trying to, we're trying to be responsible stewards for the town and and the decision that you guys just agreed on is the right one by a long shot. I, I know what it is. I, I mean, I'm not, I'm not saying that it isn't. It's just, you know, it's just a huge gulp and it's horrifying to me. And what's even more horrifying is it could likely get worse. That's, I mean, I appreciate the work in the conversation, certainly. And believe me, I know that you guys are all right.
Well, thank you.
It, it is a tough decision, Bill, without a doubt. And, and thank you guys for taking the time to really hash it out because I think it's important. Important conversation to take your time over. It really is.
And I appreciate that we can, that spreadsheet is so malleable and we can put it in, you know, yeah, really move that around and see what we're looking at and, and weigh, weigh what we're, what our options are.
Yeah. No, that's a great one. Leo does great spreadsheets for sure.
It was a great presentation. I agree. Once I moved my, my pictures out of the way, I couldn't see the right end of it in the beginning and I'm thinking, what the heck are they looking at?
Just as a reminder, if anybody does watch this when it's archived, this rate we just set, can you just explain which portion of taxes is, it's our next bill? And then the one after that that this affects, correct?
Yes. So this will be our December tax bill and our June twenty-one tax bill. And Leo, did you have a date for the tax bills going out?
Will probably be most likely November the thirtieth with a due date of January sixth or seventh. Roughly. But we, you know, historically, at least, uh, the last couple of tax bills, even the spring tax bills, you know, within even less than thirty days, somewhere is in that twenty-five day period, we had almost ninety-six percent of our tax revenue within.
Which is great.
You know, a lot of it, a lot of it obviously is coming from mortgage companies and that kind of stuff too. So they might, they'll be on the latter end of it, but, you know.
Right.
That will be, that will be helpful for us.
And so when we sit down to hash out the budget season, uh, our, our upcoming budget meetings, this will be, we'll be discussing how we'll be affected in the, in the, uh, December of the end of next year. Bill.
Yep. Yep.
Okay.
All right. Before I let you guys go and let me go and find some dinner, um, the mask ordinance. So the governor made his announcement at the end of last week, making the, his, the mask mandate, uh, across the state. Uh, we would like, if possible, um, if the board would agree to this, we'd like to hold off for a bit and see how the governor's mandate impacts, uh, people's compliance with wearing masks in town voluntarily. Um, that way we'd still be able to take the mask ordinance, the local mask ordinance back out in the future if we would, if we find that we need to. Or if we see that our numbers are jumping again.
I'd like to say, um, that I'm, I'm willing to give that a try, although, um, I was told by two people, um, that there's a certain business in town right now and, you know, I've um, that their employees, their employees don't wear masks when people go in. And I know people have, the word's out that people have stopped even going there because of it. Um, that's troubling to me. Whereas if we did have a mask ordinance, we could do something about that. And there's no sign apparently, and I, again, I just not firsthand, but, um, and I don't want to say the name, I don't think publicly, but, um, if that's true, um, I'm certainly hoping that those owners will, um, remedy that situation now that the, um, governor's mask ordinance is out. But if, if we don't have a mask ordinance, there isn't, if it's true, we don't, there's not much we can do, I guess. That's the only part that bothers me about this, um. Cause.
And perhaps you could share that in, uh, in private with, uh, with Nicole or in, and someone can follow up with that business. Maybe they, uh, I don't know how they wouldn't have heard of the governor's mask.
I did hear the first one that I heard was a while ago about that business. The most recent one was after we discussed this mask ordinance. It was in some email I must have gotten, um, from somebody, uh, about that, um, that was urging us to do the mask ordinance. And that was one of the examples they used, um, to, um, justify it. So yes, I will, I will let Nicole know who that is.
Do, we wouldn't have any more authority or less over them outside of the state mandate, right? I mean, then the attorney general's office can take care of it.
The governor said in his, um, God, you know, I would, I watched it when he announced it. He said that, um, you know, that towns could have, um, a more, um, I don't know, a more restrictive, uh, ordinance if they, if that, that would be okay. That's what he said. If he's right, I mean, I assume he is. He's the governor, but, uh, he did say that.
Well, in this case, it certainly is whatever he says goes. We, we could, just like Nash, so basically he said that so that it wouldn't, um, eliminate the mask ordinances that were put in place by Nashua, um, Keen and so on. Um, their mask ordinances still stand because they are more restrictive than the states. Um, if we were to put a mask ordinance in place, um, it would not necessarily be more restrictive than the states, but it would have, um, a local policing authority and a penalty, a local penalty associated with it. Um, I will say though, that one of the issues that we're currently dealing with right now is that we are incredibly short staffed in the police department. Um, we have two open positions. We have one disabled officer who is, who is permanently on a late duty at this time. Um, and we have another officer who just went out on paternity leave for a few weeks. And this has so depleted our, our, our staffing at this time that, uh, Chief Ginnard is actually doing some evening and midnight shifts. Um, so it's to put a mask ordinance in at this time would probably be a bit too onerous for the police department to manage. Um, I think they would have a really tough time getting out and answering all these calls, which would, I think, probably lead to a higher level of frustration amongst the people calling. You know, for that reason as well, um, I think just kind of waiting and seeing how the governor's ordinance is adopted um, by people in the community is probably a, a reasonable first step. And of course, keep an eye on the numbers.
Probably most people didn't watch that. So they, when they say mask ordinance, they're probably thinking it's one that's going to have fines and all of that. Hopefully that's what people think. I, um,
Well, I'm, I'm fine with, with waiting, sussing it out, see how it does go. I've had it in the opposite experience where a place where I had heard was oblivious to any masking. Uh, I showed up the day after the, the governor's ordinance and there was a sign on the door and everybody, employees and customers were all masked. So.
Maybe it's the same place then. I don't know.
Well, maybe, maybe not, but you know, there, there, there are places around town that have done different things. And so uh, that's just one example that I saw. And I do see people out about, out and about wearing masks and that. And, and so maybe the governor's word was, was good. Now, you know, let's just keep an eye.
It was welcome news for sure. So I, yeah, I agree. I'm okay with waiting and see what happens.
Yeah, I'm good to hear that. And I think it goes, I, I think that we still need to keep reminding people and as part of this meeting, it's good too. It just, it, a lot of it is about when you're home and not in public and you've got a few people around or you know, several people around, you, you need to be super, super careful, especially now because it, I mean, the case numbers are just astronomical. And the, I mean, the real, the real prevention starts with each individual and being safe even while you're at home.
I, we, we were going to have my brother from New York come for Thanksgiving and, and our daughter who lives here in Peterborough. And Claire and I decided that we would do it, but us and them have to wear masks even in the house with us, even family members. Um, that's what we were going to do. Turns out my brother's decided he, he doesn't even want to take a chance on coming up here and giving it to us because someone he works with was exposed. But, um, that's what, that's what they're advising people to do really is to be that careful. And I think, uh, I hope that we all can be that careful and, and keep the numbers down low in Peterborough as we've been able to do, um, pretty well from the beginning.
So the, the fire rescue recently had they, they made their commitment, what did the pledge, pledge to mask up? And I know the library has done that as well. Uh, I am as select board member, make, doing my pledge now to mask up. As Ed said, we're, it's just going to be Karen and I for Thanksgiving dinner. We're not going near any family. And, and so, and, and at work, I've pledged to mask up as well. So, you know, I have my bandana when I can or a proper mask when I, when I can as well. So if you guys are with me, we can.
True, I pledge that. And even if I'm outside walking, I carry, bring one with me now. If I don't see anybody around, then I think it's okay. But if I see somebody coming, the mask goes on.
Yeah, and that's the way to do it. So.
I make that same pledge too. And I can say with beyond a shadow of a doubt that uh, this year I have every reason in the world to want as much of my family around as possible. And there's going to be three of us. So I'm doing it. And I have every reason to want everybody here. And there's going to be my daughter, my dad's wife and myself.
Well, if you'd like, I'd like to be able to publicize the select board adopting the mask up, uh, campaign. We can announce that tomorrow and the, um, the daily despair, the weekly dispatch rather, and get it out on our Facebook page as well.
Please do. And, uh, we, no picture of us with masks because we're all alone.
Oh, hey, wait.
Could do a screenshot, I suppose.
I've got one.
All right. Well, great. Thanks, everyone. Motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Second.
Hi, good night.
Good night, everyone. Thank you.
Thanksgiving, everybody.
Oh, yeah.